Pop's making copies for us.
Ah, okay. You can wait till he gets back though. Do you call meeting for order? Or you guys could do the minutes or whatever you want to do when it's time.
I have to wait till it's exactly six o'clock.
Yes.
Which clock am I supposed to watch? Good evening, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call to order the special city council meeting, the twenty dollar car tab ad hoc meeting. And we'll start with a call to order, or, yeah, call to order.
Deputy Mayor Wells?
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
He's on his way, he's making some copies for us. Okay. Let's look at the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the May fifteenth, 2017, ad hoc committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move to approve the minutes of the...
Mike, please.
I'm sorry? I move to approve the minutes of the May fifteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Let's move on to discussion items. And what I'd like to do is take out of order B and move it to A and A to B. I added this, thank you Sean for adding it later on. It's called Subcommittee of Ad Hoc Committees on Transparency. One of the reasons why we established this ad hoc committee with four members was so that it would be televised and we could be totally transparent. And so I want to have a little bit of a discussion about when members of this ad hoc committee of four are pulled off for briefings. I have some serious concerns that that violates what we intended to do of having full transparency. And wanted to discuss that with you to see if you felt the same way.
Find somebody to work copies.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Is there any discussion on the role of full transparency in this committee of four and the place that briefings have in this, using this format?
I guess I would have to ask the question then. So, what is the, I have not been briefed on anything, so we're in a briefing meeting, so I'm curious as to what the purpose of the, of the briefings are. Information gathering or information provided to? So, just need more information on what the briefings are about.
You've had an opportunity to have some briefings with Kevin and with Ingrid. I guess my question is, is, I thought that the intent of having this small committee was all the information would come here, was what was, what's the format that we should use in relationship to being fully transparent and having sub-briefings or briefings called for individual members of the ad hoc?
Well, mostly in this particular case, they, Ingrid and Kevin wanted to know exactly where we were heading with all of this. And I think the bottom line came down to a recommendation on my part that we should possibly create a capital reserve fund, a separate one, where, a repository where we could put money into. And how we do that, where the funds come from as they come in. They just wanted to basically understand where we were heading with all of this. And I think that, you know, we're pretty much set for this year. However, some of those funds that were for this year could be used to establish the fund in addition to any additional ones we find that would be carried over to the following year.
So, would you say that's pretty valuable information?
I would say so, yeah.
Okay. Then maybe we should have Kevin and Ingrid to share that whole concept with us. Yes, and Councilmember DeCoursey.
Well, after listening to Councilmember Baggett with us, what I would suggest is that, I think if staff is looking for information, direction, you know, some better clarification perhaps of where we're thinking or where we're going, I think that's all fine to sit down and to discuss that. I think it's also the, the council member's responsibility as part of that ad hoc committee to bring a report back to this committee and just as Councilmember Baggett just did, describe what the context was. And I'm all, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Pelosi?
Well, of course, I'm all for transparency. And if, if these side meetings by staff and one council member, if that doesn't get back to the full council, then we're left out of, we're left out. We're not getting the same information.
So, let me, if I could expand upon what Councilmember Baggett said. I specifically asked for the opportunity to meet with Councilmember Baggett because in the conversations that we've had with this boy, I was struggling with some of his requests and his information needs, and I wanted to better understand. I had a pretty good understanding of what the majority of you were asking, but honestly, I had some challenges with Councilmember Baggett. So, I asked for the opportunity to sit down and better understand so that I could be more prepared as well as my team to respond. So, I wouldn't, with all due respect, members of council, I wouldn't characterize this briefing as much as a discussion to help me better understand and be better prepared because there were some interactions between Councilmember Baggett and myself that I was struggling to try to get a better sense. So, that was my purpose and happy to share my perspective of what was gleaned from that conversation.
Councilmember Pelosi?
I'm for those type of discussions. However, I think that it should be, a summation should be provided to the full council so that we could possibly miss something, you know, in the translation. So, I think that's fine. But if we get a, an email or a short summary of whatever the discussion was, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And I, with the Councilmember Baggett, I think did a good job in giving a brief summary. And the only thing I would add is that I got my questions answered as to understanding his perspective relative to the, the requests around department areas as well as trying to better understand his perspective. And I, please, if I say it wrongly, Councilmember, correct me, but the, the request for, for efficiencies, I was trying to under, better understand that statement with, and I think, I can say this, Councilmember, but you can correct me. In the private sector, efficiencies mean one thing, in the government sector, they mean something else. And I was trying to understand Councilmember's perspective, given his background in the private sector. So, that, that was my intent. I would say that, along with what the council member summarized, that was what I gleaned from it, was a better understanding of what efficiencies meant to him because he had used that term several times. So, that helped me.
Well, I, I believe that's true. And I think it was more for, like you said, a clarification of what we, what our intent was rather than a, a discussion of where we're really going to go with this whole thing and how we're going to do it. But, you know, the, the full intent of presenting that to this committee and the full council eventually was definitely the goal. But, you know, again, there's no intent to really do anything that's not transparent.
I agree.
Well, I'm going to go back to transparency again. We purposely set this up to be a four-member ad hoc committee meeting so that it would be televised for full transparency. And I think transparency occasionally is, is an issue. Your intent is never, you're always, you know, above board and, you know, and good. But I think that we need to establish practice. And that is that when we say we're going to be fully transparent on this issue, all the action, all the actions and discussions and briefings, clarifications and paperwork need to be presented to, to this group.
Sure.
Now, did everyone respond to your questionnaire?
No. You're the, actually, in, in terms of written response, you're the only one that responded. Deputy Mayor.
So, I think it's incumbent upon us in the future, when you ask for information, that we, we be more forthcoming with it also.
And I would also note that we, we did, unfortunately, time was not on our side. We did try to begin some conversations on those policy questions, but as we well know, an hour goes very, by, very quickly.
Yes, yes.
I might say, if I could, just to maybe respond to the concern about transparency, the three things I think Ingrid and I gleaned from our conversation was a better understanding of what efficiency in the council member's perspective, given his private sector background means versus what our experience in the governmental sector is. And in very quick fashion, that really comes down to, I think, some things you can do in the private sector that aren't necessarily as easily available in the public sector because of the rules and regulations we operate under. So, we got a better understanding of that. Again, I think the, the council member, we, we pointed out that, you know, and I think you heard more from Finance Director this evening about the issue of a capital reserve fund, which is something that I think the council member has experience and perspective from private sector experience that is, has a different meaning, at least in Ingrid and my experience in the public sector. And then the, what the other thing we just talked about in terms of trying to understand the, the issue around, what's the word? I apologize, I just lost the word. The, the issue of going forward relative to answering that efficiency question for us was where we needed to understand. Because bluntly, the, the council member hammered that home a couple of times in these forums. And we, we went back and did the proverbial scratching of our heads and said, okay, well, we know what efficiency means to us, but we're not sure what the council member's perspective was, so.
Again, I want to thank you. I also want to remind you that I'm the chair of this ad hoc committee. And I would appreciate it in the future if you were to reach out to different people to do some kind of clarifications.
Sure.
That you give me the heads up. I did call to, and, you know, we're still...
I apologize.
Yes, I called, left a message. And so, we got to work a little bit closer together too.
And that's fine, Deputy Mayor. I, my apologies.
No.
No intent, but I understand the request. And I, as I said, I think if we feel, at least Ingrid and myself, we had a very good understanding with the three of you perspectives and ideas where we, we struggle a little bit with Councilmember Baggett, so, but I understand your request.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing is I would like to point out that Kevin mentioned something about the private sector. And as Councilmember Pelosi and I both know from our experience with Boeing, we have things called management reserves. And that's where this whole thing kind of evolved into a suggestion. But for all intents and purposes, that was my intent tonight to talk about that at our committee here so that everybody could know exactly what we were proposing or at least thinking about hitting in that direction. Thank you, Kevin.
Gamefully turn that over to the Finance Director.
Okay, we're going to start with the item A, full spectrum of issues regarding the twenty dollar car tab fee. I should have that memorized by now. Thank you very much for joining us, Director Coleman.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi requested at the last ad hoc committee meeting, some sort of summary or something on our reserves, so I think to get a better understanding of what those reserves are and what they amount to. So, I did prepare a very brief memorandum in here where I discussed the different types of reserves that we have. And I, we have operating reserves and we have capital reserves. We have operating reserves for the general fund, which is the, the residual fund balance or the fund balance, plus what we have in the cumulative reserve fund that we look at primarily as operating. And from time to time, we'll use some of those funds for a capital one-time project, which we'll discuss here in a few minutes when we look at the graphs. And you can see where we did that. When we have additional funds in fund balance where we aren't, we are over the twelve percent that we really need in the general fund for the balance, we will from time to time take that overage and we'll move it over into what the cumulative reserve fund, which is the savings fund, the revenue stabilization fund, the emergency fund. So, it goes over there. And that's where we've always put it. And over the years, we have put quite a bit of money in there. We've built it up significantly since 2010. If the general fund can absorb the debt service payments, we have the general fund make those debt service payments. There's been a couple of years before, I think, last, maybe, not last year, but maybe the year before where we paid that out of our, our savings fund because we were trying to get our general fund to balance. The requirement is an eight to twelve percent general fund fund balance. We shoot for a range because that gives us flexibility. And when the times are, as we'd say, better now than they were ten, or eight, nine, seven years ago, we want to shoot for the twelve percent reserve. And we also...
Can we interrupt and ask questions?
Sure.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Shelley, eight percent is roughly estimate, how much funding is that? For a month, one month?
It's one month. And we have...
Roughly.
Okay, well, okay, we have, I'm looking at our budget. Sixty-five divided by twenty is about five, six million, five, six million dollars in that range. We have a 2017 unamended budget or original budget of about sixty-six million dollars. So, eight percent of that is a little over five million.
Thank you.
And in the cumulative reserve, we also have the range of five to ten percent. And we've been aiming for a ten percent balance in that fund. And that is located on page fifty-two of the actual budget, yep, the actual budget book. So, all our policies are in there under that section. And, and to remind you, when we sit down and talk budget every two years, we bring those reserve policies forward and discuss them, however briefly, but we do discuss them. And these are policies that we discussed, and they get incorporated right into our budget document to memorialize that conversation. And of course, we could have more conversation and discuss this more about how these reserves or policies should look. But that's where they're at now. Now, as far as reserves, the city funds capital replacement in the IT Innovation and Technology Fund, and that's part of the inter-fund rental rate. Every department pays an inter-fund service charge. A component of that is just for the operations and maintaining that equipment. And then there's apportions for capital replacement. That works the same way with the equipment rental fund. So, we are accumulating capital, we have some higher reserves in there, we have some policy around what those reserves should look like. So, when our, as our equipment ages and we need to replace it, we have the funding to do so. The internal service fund known as the facilities fund, that fund, we maintain our facilities. As you saw, there were some big projects in there for roof replacement on this building as well as exterior maintenance for, to seal the building. Apparently, there's some leaking and things like that. So, we have to look at our capital funds, like real estate excise tax, to do that. The fund does not accumulate capital for those types of things. However, we do budget for ongoing repair, remainten, and maintenance. Things do break, and we have a couple of people that go around and fix those things or we report if the HVAC isn't working, things like that. And they're in charge of repairing that and making it work again. That's just one example.
Now, in the, under the facilities fund, is that where the airport is carried? Like for its...
No.
Okay.
The airport is its own fund, its own cup. Remember all the cups?
Yep.
It's its own cup. And it is administered by Public Works. And there is no capital replacement. That, that fund operates on very slim margins because we have the rentals, the land leases and the hangar rentals, and the operations and maintenance of the airport pretty much absorb a lot of that revenue that comes in. There's very little leftover. We're fortunate to get FAA grants, and the Washington State Department of Aviation and Transportation Aviation, Aviation Division does provide a partial match towards that federal grant. So, the city does have to pay something on these capital projects. But FAA is looking at runway repair and maintenance, like slurry seal or repair, taxiway reconfiguration, and now we're working on that runway extension. We had a lighting repair project out there in the last several years. So, it's, it has to do with the runway. As far as our hangars and our, our facilities, the, there are no grants for that. We have to look within and find a way to fund that.
Is that an account or an area where we should be annually putting a little money in there so that next time something happens? Because it's aging.
Yes, it is.
And you're saying the FAA takes care of the runways with matching funds and others. But the, you know, this is the third incident we've had with the airport. First, the first on the beams, then the second look at the beams, and now the slider doors. Is this symptomatic of an aging facility or do you think that this is the whole iceberg and we don't need to address maybe building some kind of a contingency fund for the airport?
Well, I think a contingency fund is always a good idea. I'm a finance person and of course, the, you never can have too much contingency in my mind. Can the airport afford a contingency? There's a lot of costs going on now with the airport with EPA, stormwater permits and things like that. There's a lot of costs down there in regulation. I think it would be difficult for the fund as it's structured right now to create much of a reserve, to be honest.
Okay. Where did the, the money for the, which account did the money for the airport beams or ceilings come from of these accounts?
It came right out of the general fund. When we did the budget amendment in March, we took it right out of general fund balance reserves. The money floating around in general fund that wasn't appropriated and is just in there after results of operations from 2016. And the general fund can support any of the funds in the city. The airport fund cannot move money to other funds because it's an enterprise fund, but the general fund may do so. So, that's, that...
Oh, Councilmember Pelosi?
In the inner office... Thanks. In the inner office memorandum...
Yes.
The last, last, excuse me, the last paragraph, the first sentence, "The city does not have a policy around capital replacement outside of the equipment rental and IT funds." Why is that?
It's just never, we just haven't done it. We've created those internal service funds that provide that capital. And I think the reason is that we have relied for the capital replacement on savings as we accumulate money in cumulative reserve or real estate excise tax. And it's just, some of these, sometimes some of these things that we need to do are so large in dollars, I think that it just doesn't get addressed. And, but we have, what we've been doing is we've been using, like when we built fifteen years ago or sixteen years ago, the Justice Center, that was all cash. And we used real estate excise tax and we used general fund balance, residual balance. That was right after we'd come off the dot-com years and we had some residual sitting in there. So, we, council allocated that money over for that. With the community center, we paid cash for that also. We had, we were lucky enough to get a large grant also from Senator Fane's hard work down at the Capitol, and we appreciate that. But, you know, we, we, we don't, we haven't done an assessment of our facilities and say, okay, where are we at? You know, what, what should we be thinking about here? What are our priorities? You know, look, our roads, our sidewalks, our M&amp;O facility, which is the same facility size that we had when we were thirty-five thousand or even smaller than that. We're bursting at the seams down at the Justice Center. And when that building was built in two thousand two, two thousand one, two thousand two, I think in that area, it was a twenty-year building. So, where are we at now? We're at 2017. And we're barreling down on that last five years of that projection of that building for growth. So, how do we want to go about this? You know, how, how do we want to set up some sort of reserve for, say, any emergency, natural disaster, or just for general replacement? Say that there's some property that comes up for sale and it's where we might want to put a M&amp;O yard, or we may want to put a new police station. And if we had a fund that we could turn to, or you're issuing debt, you know? So, and in our policies, you know, we say that we won't issue debt unless we have a revenue stream to service that debt and pay for that debt. And I highly recommend that. That's, that's a good practice. So, if council, if council chooses to look at, say, okay, we want to, if real estate excise tax come in a certain dollar amount, we should take a certain percent of that or a certain dollar amount of that and set it, set it into this reserve. If general fund comes in with a fund balance, a certain percent over, or if we want to take a little bit of money every year and set it aside, and that's what, that's what we have been doing as we move the residual fund balance from the general fund to the cumulative reserve. In essence, that cumulative reserve can be used for capital replacement also. So, as we move that over, at least in my mind, I'm thinking, although it's not a great deal of money, even though a million or two million dollars is a lot of money to a lot of people, but when you're talking capital facilities, it really isn't a great deal of money. So, in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, not only for operations, we do have a little bit of money in there, but, but our, you know, in our reserves that we budget to the twenty-two percent, which is two years out. So, what, what should we do? Should we start now? Should we start thinking about that and how we, what that would look like?
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Shelley, I really appreciate the explanation and the discussion of this because, again, it takes me back to my years at the Housing Authority where, you know, in the, in the public housing portion of the, of the Housing Authority world, you're not allowed to have replacement reserves. You live off the capital fund program, which is the non-competitive grant Housing Authority receive, do their capital work on public housing projects. Unfortunately, the grant is constantly being depleted and lessened through administrations in Capitol Hill, which has resulted in approximately an annual law shortfall of about three billion dollars a year. I say that because I don't want to see us getting into a situation where we have such a shortfall that in some respects, we basically have to board things up because they're no longer habitable and we can't service them. I'm in favor of replacement reserves. In the context of this committee for what we're looking at for the, our roads and arterials, streets and arterials, it's evident to me, only to me probably, that we need to look at that as a similar type of a process which would allow us in some respects to perhaps ramp up the shortfall that we have. And I think Deputy Mayor may comment on this later as well, where we know we can't do, we can't tackle the seven million dollars worth of projects right now without seriously stressing the organizational staff, and we're doomed to failure, in my opinion, if we try and do that. So, we have to find a way to systematically step up and ramp up to get to the point where we can be. And in some respects, as Councilmember Baggett said, with a capital reserve or in my language or replacement reserve, I think we need to look at that now. I think we need to look hard at where we are with the percentages we have. I get concerned when I hear the general fund where we lower to eight percent, but it gives us a, a one-month cash flow. Kevin mentioned the private sector and public sector. If you're in the private sector, you can't operate on a one-month cash, cash store, you're out of business. We don't want to see the city go out of business naturally. So, I think we have to work on a, I use the word formula, to start identifying this within our budget and figure out a way where we can actually put some dollars into those categories, all the categories, including our, our charge here as this committee, for replacement reserves. I, I'm all for that.
Well, it's, you know, I, I do have some slides here that I would like to discuss with you. You know, as far as operations go, the city, we have come out of the recession nicely and, but we're at a point right now where we're at the state's mercy. And the first slide, slide... And the first slide, slide one, which I gave you another copy of because apparently it was kind of blurry. And I have that up by the screen also. And what first I maybe should show you is slide two, which goes back to actual fund balances for the last seven years, from 2010. And you see, we kind of live here. We live in the 41 actuals, the 45%. And then when we budget, our revenues, some of these revenues are cyclical. As you can see, we had this bump in 2014, and I think I addressed that. Some of that is, had to do with the, we had a good sales tax year in 14 and 15. Also, we had good development fee revenues. In 15 and 16, we budgeted, we had the score debt budgeted in there, which we aren't, didn't have to pay. And now we've taken it out of the general fund and we have a debt service fund, so. But we took that all into consideration when we prepared the 17 and 18 budget, that we weren't going to have to pay that money for that debt service. So then when we go to budget, whoops, we go to budget, out here in 17 and 18, you can see that those reserves kind of taper on down. Do I think they'll be this low at the end of 18? If everything stays as it is now, I don't think they'll be that low. But because we budget for all of our salaries and benefits for the full year, even though there's attrition, we, we do budget full and we're conservative on our revenues. And when we look at our 2017 general fund budget, our revenues are just under $66 million and our expenditures are just over $68 million. And next year, that goes to about $66 million in revenue and $71 million in expenditures. So it, will we spend all that? Probably not. Will we, where our revenues come in? We hope so. But this, this fund balance that we live up here in this 45% right now, given that we have the delta between our revenues and our expenditures, right now, we don't know what's going to happen with state budget. It gives us some opportunity, time to react. If we were to lose, suddenly lose some state shared revenues that were significant, we don't have to, we, we don't have to be extreme in our reaction. We have some time to think about it, to plan, because we have some reserves that we can rely on. And when there's things that come up that we don't know they're coming up, like a couple of years ago, we had the health clinic and we came, came up with a couple hundred thousand to fund that. It came out of this, this reserve that we have floating up there. What, you know, we appropriated it. So it's a fund balance that's sitting there, and then council can appropriate it. But I, and this year, we kind of have a little bit of overlap between our sales tax on the annexation area and our bank property tax, but next year, we won't have that overlap. So I, we're positioned well, but we do have labor contracts. Costs are increasing. And so also, given our reserves that we have, you know, how, how low do we think we want to go here? You know, do, this is one-time money. Once it's spent, it's gone. This isn't, you know, four or $5 million every year. It's the same four or $5 million that's getting rolled, rolled forward. So I don't want there to be a thought that, oh, we've got this four or $5 million every year. It's continually rolled over. It's just sitting in the pot. You know, what's, what's your risk? You know, what's your risk tolerance? Do we want to take that down? Do we want to say, I would say for one-time use, you know, take it, take it down and move it over into a reserve, whether it be cumulative reserve, a component accumulative reserve, or if we move it into a new fund that's capital reserve and replacement?
Councilmember Pelosi, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Shelley, regarding the community center, we took money out of the reserves. What, what year was that?
We took it out right here. See, between 13 and 14, the cumulative reserve fund went from 8.2 million to 5.6 million. And we've put some more money in 15 and 16. We transferred money back to the cumulative reserve to build that back up. But here's, here's where we took the money, right here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
So Shelley, you had to help me out with this a little bit too, because in, in your opinion, and this may be kind of a strange way to put it, but where's our danger zone in our general fund?
I think when we go down to 22%, we're just under three months of operation. I think that we are sitting good here. Again, I think that at the end of 2018, that this reserve will, will be higher than the 23.8%. I would, I would say if some of this money here is used as one-time, I would, I would not go below the 22% for operating reserves. When we budget, when we put the budget together, we might go a little bit below it, but I know, you know, we, we always plan on there being money left over from the prior year when we create the new budget.
So in that, in that process, when we go back to the prior disastrous recession we were in, and knowing recessions are cyclical, would that level help us sustain through another recessionary period or periods?
Depending how long it was. If it was a six or eight-month recession, probably. If it goes as long as the last one, which I think was like 18 months, 19 months, and the city did do some staff reduction, we did furloughs. So there's things that can be done short of laying people off, and that's where the furloughs came in, and that was helpful to, to some degree, but, and, and the layoffs. So we did, we did cut back. It depends on how long and deep it is.
Another question for you, Shelley, that I alluded to last time I met with you. In very simplistic terms, for local preservation, the 105 account, we budget 2 million, but Ingrid Engineering has shared with us that we need 7 million a year. And this year, we're achieving it by rolling over from previous years. How many years have we been doing this rollover? And if we've been doing it for a number of years, do we really need to have 5 million somewhere along the line added to this account to reach the 7 million? And, or is it the only way we're ever going to be able to use what we're rolling over is by adding project engineers or someone like that?
I think that our project engineering staff is at capacity, and I think, I'm not going to say 100% of the carryforward of project expenses is, is due to staff capacity limitations. I think that there's other things that happen, like we went out for bid, we didn't get a good bid on one of the large projects. Right-of-way acquisition can take some time. There, there can just be some hiccups in the line. But I do think that the ability for staff, I think, I think our pipeline is full, so to speak. And we generally do carryforward project costs because no project begins on January 1 and ends on 12/31. It has been a little bit more in the last couple of years.
Will you be able to get us some of that-
I can, yes.
-that data? Because if we're just looking at adding money, and what we also need is to look at people to manage it, I know that I haven't, haven't the extensive building capacity, construction background as the rest of my panel, but I do know, having built an elementary school that was 81,000 square feet, that you need a project manager. And in the long run, that project manager saves you more than their salary in making sure you get a quality product that, that really does meet your needs. So if you could get that for our next meeting, I would really appreciate it.
I'll have that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pelosi. Councilmember DeCoursey, then Councilmember Pelosi.
And I've also mentioned many times about our staff capacity and fully understand where we're in the project manager world when we, we have a lack of capacity, or we overstressed that capacity. Because that's a, that's a detriment for, for concern as well. I think what would be helpful, and Kevin, maybe you can help us with this, is, and it may not be a way, really way to get enough information for us, or even accurate information, I'm not sure, but is there a way to look at per-project manager capacity? I know it depends upon the type of project that we're doing, the complexity of the project, but do we have some way to measure what our staff capacity is? And I know it's maxed out. And what we would need to do to ramp that up over maybe the next two to four years to, again, not overstress the process, but to smooth into a, a, another level of, of project management to address these issues?
I, I want to just dovetail before Pelosi responds too, is one of the things that I think we all feel really comfortable about is all the projects that we've done over the years have been to the highest standards. And, and we don't want to, we are smart enough to know that we need to look at the, the revenue side, but we also need to have the staff, the quality staff, to implement those things.
Thank you. So to Councilmember DeCoursey's question, I, I think the answer is yes. When we went through the 17, 18 budget process, Ingrid and her leadership team and her service area went through a process of trying to analyze and better align workload to staff resources. And it was actually a really interesting exercise. And, and while it, it is certainly not one-to-one by any means, they did actually go through a process of, of, of better understanding both the amount of work that they were handling and that was anticipated relative to the staffing resources they had. And it was, so I think, I think we can provide that to you. I will certainly let Ingrid speak for herself when that information comes forward, but I think the answer is yes. One thing, if I could just clarify something too that was said earlier, the, the premise of the 5 million additional, that's based, again, on that issue of a target of 70 for the pavement condition index. So if the council made a policy choice to go with some alternate number, that number could adjust. I just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record. But yes, Councilmember, I think we could work on providing that information to you relative to the staff resource. I think Ingrid has shared anecdotally some of her thoughts about the potential need for staffing resources based on the ultimate number we might go to.
Yes. He's got a follow-up.
Just along with that, Kevin, what would be helpful is, I know we have our, our individual, our whole tip report, we have all the, the data sheets of projects and such. What would really be helpful for me, and hopefully for the rest of the committee here, in looking at some of our decision-making, is to put together a spreadsheet or a Gantt chart of our projects that are planned over the next five years, both our, our streets and our arterials. So it gives us a snapshot of what we're looking at for the cost we need to know, we need to have do the work, but also the magnitude of projects, the number of projects. And having it in, in one Gantt chart for me also helps me kind of define a path of maybe where we need to go. And that would also help me in some respects, looking at, looking at the, the pic of where we need to be. Is 70 where it should be? Do we focus on spending money now, as even Councilmember Wagner has mentioned in the past, of doing the roads that are in, not in fairly good shape, but in good shape where we can overlay and get that capacity done for the next 10 years plus? But it helps me better identify where I think we should go in our decision-making as part of this committee's charge.
Could I ask some clarifying questions, just to make sure I'm getting the right understanding of what you're asking for, Councilmember? So this would be something that is beyond the, the estimated timelines in our capital improvement program document? So something that, because that does have timeframes associated for each project. So that's the first question. And then the follow-up question to that is, are you only speaking in the transportation arena or all capital projects?
No, just the transportation. I want to limit it to what we're responsible for as part of this committee related to the shortfall of doing our, our improvements on our, our roadwork, all in. So again, I know it's going to take time to do this, and it's a staff, you know, commitment to, to put this together, but for me, a Gantt chart and a, a snapshot can, for me, easily, easier tell the story in one picture than going through all the documents and trying to assemble all that in my mind.
And I'm assuming the committee is, obviously, we have not done any significant scheduling of, of projects. We don't typically do that until we get closer. So this is rolled up information?
Rolled up information, and if it's just a estimated timeframe for when the projects may occur, for me, that's good enough. It just gives me an opportunity to look at the potential when these projects may occur, not necessarily when they will occur.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you. I'm going to switch gears. Page 10 of 16 of the 2017, 2018 budget. Section 7 talks about equipment replacement. You there?
No.
No?
So you're in the policy? Oh, there you go. I got it.
Yeah, okay. I think that this committee needs to know how we replace equipment, like IE vehicles. We need to know how many vehicles in our fleet, and what is the recycle replacement time? By, is it by how old it is? Is it by mileage? And also, how old is our fleet?
Okay. I don't have that all right here, which-
No, no, I know you don't. I know you don't.
Yeah.
But if we could have it by our next meeting-
Okay.
-I'm sure that the data is available.
So you want some statistics on the turnover when we-
Yeah, yeah, the policy.
Police cars are generally 24 months, and, you know, because, and then maybe our larger equipment, it might be seven to 10 years. But we can get that. Equipment rental has a process and some policies.
Yeah, I'm kind of interested in that too. I know at, at Pierce County Public Health, we're looking at making our, our fleet smaller, and in some situations, using Uber and some of the other things that are new out there. And I've had some concerns from people that drive by some of the parking lots for staff vehicles, the numbers that we have. And so I think that, Bill, that's a real good point. I'd be interested in that too. We're closing in on, we want to leave about five minutes early so that we can have setups. So why don't we review with Shelley and Kevin what we would like to see, if possible, again, for the, the next meeting? And I still haven't given up on looking at some of the other accounts. I'm pleased to see that there's the possibility of 1.3 million for streets addition that the mayor's requested from the ending fund balance. But I'm not sure if there isn't more money out there, some other places that may not represent a priority need like our roads. And so I haven't given up on that. Yes, Councilmember Pelosi.
We received a sidewalk repair and replacement project a few weeks ago. And I'd like to know how much money we have put aside for sidewalk repair? And how did we determine the priority structure of doing those? Engineering gave us a, a great handout, showing us photos of sidewalks within the city that are, some are worse than others. And, but what is, what is our engineering policy for replacement?
I would have to defer to the public works.
Yeah, understand.
And we could bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah, next time.
Any, any comments or thoughts, additional thoughts, Bob?
No, not at this time.
Okay, then we're going to adjourn. Oh, wait, we're not. We've got one more from-
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
On pages 15 and 16, this laid out the REIT I and REIT II budgets-
Yes.
-as of May 31. The 28, the 2018 budget dollars, it doesn't look like that has, we have scratched the surface of how can we use some of that 2018 budget? It, it seems like this REIT I and REIT II only addressed over in the priority area, the yellow section, only covered the 2017 and not the 2018.
Okay.
Is that true or false?
Well, we collected these from the departments, and I think, I think what they're looking at on this is just the 2017, now that you mention it.
I'd, I'd really highly recommend that we look at 2018 as well, because there seems to be some big dollars in that area. Thank you.
And another question. What I'm looking for is sustainability in that we build an account that is self-generating money from, in the future. If we were to add the $1.3 million to the local street fund, would that be something we'd be able to do annually, or is this just a one-time fix?
One time.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Thank you. I'm not interested in one-time fixes. Yes, you did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
You're answering all of our questions, and we'll try to be clearer with you, Kevin. Appreciate your efforts. Okay? And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.